Don't let them steal them, my friend.
That's right.
No. He got triple three floor anyway. I went into the county building and I had a whole pocket full of them. Listen.
Hey, how are you?
You should have put them in the car. I got going here to see this trip for it.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have you explain it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks for getting the signs up. Thought that would be a good thing to come.
Hey, how's it going, Grant?
Yeah.
It's a good one. Yeah, it's gonna be.
Do I?
He was a good one.
It should be.
Just like, test you, make sure you are.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
How you doing?
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lescot, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notteriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, sir. Civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we may each have different ideas for achieving that objective. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero three eight for the property located at thirty-four fifty-five Freedom Drive. The petitioners is thirty, the petitioner is thirty, thirty-four fifty-five Freedom Drive LLC. The present zoning classification is B-one Highway Business Service District, section one five five point zero three three. The requested zoning relief is a conditional permitted use pursuant to sections one five five point zero three three C seven, conditional permitted uses in the B-one Highway Business Service District, taverns and microbreweries, exclusive, exclusive of drive-up or drive-in windows for the sale of alcohol, and one five five point two zero zero taverns, microbreweries, country clubs and golf course clubhouses with liquor sales by the drink. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested CPU for a tavern with a floor area not to exceed one thousand three hundred eighty-seven square feet inside the building and not to exceed more than three hundred and ninety-four square feet of patio outside as shown in the petition in its exhibits. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon Regional Planning Staff and approve as submitted. Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a, a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the staff recommendation of approval. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing no alders signed up to speak, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The voting is now open.
Very.
Alderman Rockford.
I'm joined.
The motion passes with ten voting yes and then voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero three nine for the property located at thirty-four Hazel Dell Lane. Petitioners are Sean and Molly Neary. Present zoning classification is R-one Single Family Residence District, section one five five point zero one six. Requested zoning relief is a variance of appendix A, section three setbacks of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the installation of a new in-ground swimming pool to the north side of the existing house that will be forty-five feet from the shoreline at its closest point rather than the seventy-five feet required. Concrete pool deck will be forty-one point one at the closest pen, point to the shoreline. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is grant the variance as requested. The chair will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we take, uh, have the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation to grant the variance as requested. Any discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. If I could, just someone from zoning, um, does this variance impact any floodplain?
Say it again.
Uh, someone from zoning, if, if there's a floodplain designation associated with this property?
No, it does not impact a floodplain.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes and then voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-three dash zero four zero for the property located at thirty-six fifty Winchester Road. The petitioner is Ryan P. Dunn. Present zoning classification is B-one Hi, Highway Business Service District, section one five five point zero three three. The requested zoning relief is reclassification from B-one Highway and Business Service District, section one five five point zero three three, to I-one Light Industrial District, section one five five point zero four zero, and a variance of section one five five point one one two surfacing to allow the continued use of storing vehicles and equipment on the existing back gravel lot. Concrete parking lot will remain unchanged instead of the solid dust-free surface per code. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the requested I-one zoning and the requested paving variance for a period not to exceed two years. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff and including the traffic engineer's recommendation limited only to areas of storage that are part of the normal path of travel. If any areas are part of the path of travel, such as access to the storage area, that they be treated with a dust palliative prior to vehicular travel over the aggregate areas. Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I, I request we accept the petition as submitted.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to rec, to accept the petition as submitted. Any discussion? Seeing no aldermen or alderwomen signed up to speak, those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The motion passes with ten voting yes, none, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty dash zero five four, an amendment to chapter one five five, sections one five five point four nine six through one five five point four nine eight pertaining to adult-use cannabis business establishment transporting organizations and modifying separation provisions and variances. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff amended recommendation is approval. The proposed amendment recommends changes to sections one five five point four nine six, one five five point four nine seven, and one five five point four nine eight to make it less restrictive for many adult-use cannabis business establishments to operate in the city of Springfield and to include additional conditional permitted use verification requirements. Clarifications on the record of the staff's, staff's observations are below and recommended. See comments in the zoning package. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is denial. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I've, I've got an amendment, proposed amendment number one. Motion to amend.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for amendment number one. Any discussion on the amendment itself?
Could you read the amendment?
Alderman Gregory, do you have a question about the amendment?
I was, I was gonna ask for Alderman Redpath, could you read the amendment, what it, what it is, sir?
Greg, could you just?
Sure, the, um.
We left out one of the groups, I think.
So the, the, a, a proposed amendment number one would add, um, the, would add adult-use cannabis processing, uh, organizations, um, to the one thousand-foot setback, uh, that was in, that type of cannabis establishment was inadvertently left out of the proposed changes, so we're just adding that in three places.
Aye, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to amend. Any other discussion on the amendment itself? Just take a voice, voice vote, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, so now I'll take a motion for the amended zoning.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to accept the amended motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the amended motion. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. That concludes the zoning portion of our motion.
Congratulations, Grant. Letting that one go.
The chair now recognizes Treasurer Redpath Fager for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of October, the beginning balance, sixty-seven million, three hundred, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. We took in total receipts of thirteen million, three hundred, eighty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of October totaling twelve million, four hundred, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty dollars, which left the corporate fund ending balance in the month of October at sixty-eight million, one hundred, fifty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. The ending general fund balance includes seventeen million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is the October ending balance of the ARPA money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, make a recommend, make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but Alderman Redpath has signed up to speak.
So Mayor, we, we were informed of, at, at the beginning of the new council that a lot of the money that's in the fund balance is appropriated. Can we get a breakdown of that, uh, sometime soon to see what, what is appropriated and what the, what the real balance is gonna be without those ordinances?
We've been working on that as we prepare for the, uh, budget. Um, we're going to be meeting with the mayor, uh, the last week of the month and the first week of December, so we will have a good idea of where we're at.
Thank you. That's all, Neil. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do. Madam Mayor.
To follow up on that.
Alderman.
And can we get a breakdown of what's a?
I see.
Can we also get a breakdown of what has been appropriated for the, uh, ARPA fund money as well?
We're working on that too, because we've already met on some of that. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on the treasurer's report? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay. The chair will now entertain a motion, uh, to recognize, or I'm sorry, I'm not entertaining a motion, the chair's now gonna recognize the OBM Director Metzger for presentation of the OBM contract report. Does anyone have questions on the OBM contract report? Seeing none, we will move on. The chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the November seventh, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting and approve.
A move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and discussion, and second, any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
A move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second for discussion. We have someone who signed up to speak on these items, is Joe McMenamin in the audience?
Thank you, Mayor.
So Joe McMenamin signed up to speak on agenda items number two thousand twenty-three dash five two one, two thousand twenty-three dash five two two, two thousand twenty-three dash five two three, two thousand twenty-three dash five two seven, and two thousand twenty-three dash five three seven. So there will be five minutes allotted.
No, for right now, Mayor, I'm just speaking to an ordinance that's on consent, and that, uh, ordinance is, uh, the.
You're getting five minutes for these, sir.
Um, excuse me, uh, I signed up for, as each ordinance is coming up for discussion, I signed up for them separately, and I think the city clerk understood it that way.
Point of order. I don't think that's in our rules that someone can sign up for multiple ordinances, it, don't we just do, we're allowing people to talk, but normally, shouldn't that be at, um, at the public comment portion?
So we allow individuals to talk during, um, during, or on ordinances, but they're allotted five minutes in total, uh, so when they choose to speak, they get five minutes, uh, for public comment. That's correct.
So, so you don't get, you can't sign up for, for, in this case, five ordinances and get twenty-five minutes?
Correct.
That's right.
Well, guaranteed, I wasn't gonna use twenty-five minutes, but I think our rules of procedure are very clear, that you can sign up for an individual ordinance and speak to that ordinance, and I've got separate comments for five different ordinances, so I think this is.
The chair recognizes you for five minutes total this evening, sir.
That's fine, if you wanna cut me off at five minutes, but please don't interrupt during, while I'm talking, Madam Chair. So, uh, I don't know where to go now, because I had really prepared for this to some great extent, really wanted to be helpful to our city council, um, on five different ordinances, and, uh, I, I think I'll maybe ask the, the Attorney General's office to make a comment on our rules of procedure and what they allow citizens. A very basic tenet of due process is notice and opportunity to be heard, so you wanna be heard before a particular ordinance is voted upon. Um, my first comment was gonna be on the, I think, the retention and sign-on bonus ordinance, which is twenty twenty-three five twenty-seven, was prepared prior to the major collective bargaining agreement we have for our police. So I'm concerned about how the two spending ordinances will overlap. So we've got one point four million for sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses. The new collective bargaining agreement for hiring officers, they're currently hired at the rate of fifty-two thousand dollars. If someone's hired today, they're hired at the rate of fifty-two thousand. Under the collective bargaining agreement, as of March of two thousand twenty-four, the starting pay for a newly hired officer will be eighty-one thousand dollars. So you can see, there's gonna be a massive jump, a massive bump from fifty-two thousand to eighty-one thousand dollars for newly hired officers. So I'm concerned about, we've got this additional ordinance that's on consent that allows for additional sign-on bonuses and retention bonuses. Uh, I think, uh, we have to reconsider what we're doing here, because we don't want them to be one on top of the other. Um, and then I think this council needs a plan from our chief, I know he's got a plan regarding how he's gonna implement and spend down that one point, roughly one point four million dollars, but the city council should weigh in on that plan ahead of time for accountability and for oversight. Um, the pay for sergeants, currently a sergeant that gets promoted to sergeant today is paid ninety-five thousand dollars, under the new contract, that sergeant will get paid a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So for the newly hired patrolman, it'll be a fifty-six percent increase bump in their starting pay, and for a sergeant, it'll be a twenty percent bump in starting pay. I'm also concerned about the collective bargaining agreement, um, phases in the pay increases in this fashion, three percent, we're two years into an expired contract right now, so three percent for the first expired year, thirteen percent for the next expired year that we're in right now, two point five then the next year, and two point five the year after that. I'm very concerned about that thirteen percent bump in year two. I think that could be used as a pension spiking opportunity for our police, and we've been through that in the past. So, so right, if we pass the collective bargaining agreement tonight, a, just about any officer, particularly I'm concerned about the senior officers, will have a bump in pay of sixteen percent, and the way the police and fire pension, pensions work is, your pension is based on your rate of pay on the last day of your work. So anyone who retires after the, what you're gonna consider later on today, who retires after that collective bargaining agreement is passed, will immediately get a sixteen percent rate in pay. They could retire the next day, and basically they've just primed or spiked or pumped their pension by sixteen percent. I wish I could talk more, I've really prepared, you know, days for this, and talked with some very informed individuals. I will ask for the inspector general to review the question regarding how much time someone has to speak. I had separate comments for each, I spent more than five, I'm gonna go five minutes on this one, because I'm not gonna have an opportunity to talk later on, which is really, uh, it's, it's kind of a disgrace for a former alderman to be treated this way, to be honest, so I'm very disappointed, and, um, I, I don't know how, um, someone should be treated this way, uh, so all the persons.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you very much.
Chief Scarlett, did you have something you wanted to say?
I would love to speak. I think we're talking about disgraceful, what's disgraceful is assuming that the men and women that put this uniform on day in and day out to protect this city only do it for the money. That's absolutely, um, the farthest thing from their mind when they respond to calls for service on a daily basis. It's about keeping this city safe, it's about keeping in line with, um, other officers. The one thing that I heard about from you all, um, earlier this year in February was how are we going to recruit and how are we gonna retain good officers? One of the things that you all voted ten to nothing, uh, I'm sorry, Alderman McMenamin was sitting up there at the time when they voted, when you all voted ten-nothing, was to add this ten percent salary adjustment so that we could be in line with our comparables, and that's simply what has happened here. Um, one thing that you all tasked me with doing was coming up with innovative ways to hire and retain new officers. One thing we did was specifically Deputy Chief Josh Dunkle went out and found a grant through a Let's Be for recruiting and retention. I put a plan together on how that money would be used, uh, and our goal is to retain officers, and there is a clawback that comes along with that, that, um, asks that our officers spend at least three years with our agency, otherwise they have to pay that back. Um, it just upsets me to think that our men and women only do this because of the money. It's about their love of service, it's about their love of this community, it's about their love of the people that they serve. Uh, we had an officer that stopped an active shooter this year. We had fifty-three officers that responded to a state trooper that was shot by a convicted felon, and we found that individual and we took him into custody peacefully, Springfield Police Department did. We have officers that respond to various calls every day, and they love their jobs, and they will continue to do that, and I think what this is about tonight is about showing them the respect that they deserve and becoming, as Alderman Redpath put it, we are the capital city. We should want people to come work for us, part of that is the financial component, so, um, it upsets me to think that the only, the, the only thing that we think about when it comes to law enforcement is money, because that's the farthest thing from anyone's mind that wears this uniform. And I, if anyone has any questions on the recruiting and retention grant, uh, that you all put on consent, I'd be more than happy to answer that now, and I would've answered any questions, uh, previously this week if anyone would've called me, uh, regarding the recruiting and retention grant or anything else for that matter, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, so, uh, Mayor, I, I have nothing against people getting raises and being paid fairly, but I, I, I do feel some kind of way when I can't find the fiscal impact statements that are involved with some of these actions that we are taking, so corporate council or maybe the director can, can, can let me know that, uh, you, we have inclusive to make good decisions, the fiscal impact statements, that our rules require us to have before voting on this kind of money. Because police is, is a good thing, they should be paid fair, but we got a whole city to run, we got a whole budgeting process coming up, and, and this is an awful lot, so my question is, do we have our fiscal impact statements, 'cause I can't find them?
It was emailed to you.
Emailed, it's not in the packet tonight?
Well, there is a, the fiscal impact statement is attached to the grant for, um, that we're talking about, for the recruitment and retention grant on consent, and then for the.
Put it on the consent agenda right now.
For the supplemental appropriation for wages, um, if this, uh, if the PBPA contract is passed, because that was discussed, so if you're talking about that, uh, that supplemental appropriation ordinance has the fiscal impact for this year and where it's going to come from, and then I believe, um, the, so, those are the two fiscal impact statements that were attached to the actual financing ordinances, and then the overall fiscal impact of the contract was shared, um, with the older persons by Budget Director, uh, I, I believe, I, she emailed that around.
Mayor, could I respond?
Alderman Williams, are you done? I was gonna let.
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening, you, I, I wanna hear from the other alderman.
You okay? All right. Alderman Hanauer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, I'm, I'm sorry to jump in front of you, Chuck. I, I did some, last week when we, uh, when, when it was brought up, we were, I did a little research, had some people do some research, and we pulled all the union contracts that all pretty much were, I think, they were voted on by everyone on this council, and not, I, I didn't see one with, with a fiscal impact statement. So, um, the fact that we voted on other union contracts not had fiscal impact, and now all of a sudden we want a fiscal impact, um, you know, and if you wanna see them, I've got them here, Alderman.
See what?
These are all the, the, the old, old, uh, ordinances from twenty-two, and I think, let's see here, yeah, most of them are from twenty-two, they did not have fiscal impact statements that we, we voted on, they were contracts with other unions.
So, I, so I guess, Mayor, my, my question, what I'm getting at is, and, and that's all fine and good, and maybe what you're saying may be a fact, you know, but what is our rule? You know, I, I've been sent something that tells me as an alderman that we should have fiscal statements and that those are our council rules, is, is that true?
So you have them, and this administration appreciates that you're holding me to a different standard than the previous one, thank you.
Well, so, so you can make the difference, though. If, if it wasn't right back then, and as far as Hanauer's concerned, so we're just gonna continue to make it bad, or are we gonna do our jobs and be fiscal responsible, Mayor?
Sent them to you, sir.
You sent them to me.
Mm-hmm. And your email.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
So let's get to the bottom of this thing. Let's, let's get around the politics and the nonsense that's going on right here tonight. We all know that our police department was number ten in salary of cities their size in this, in this state. They were last, very, they were last. They, they, we were losing recruits to Decatur and Bloomington and Champaign and Rockford, Peoria, we were losing recruits to them. Uh, they'd get into year three and take their certification, go somewhere else, because the salaries were ridiculous. These people put their lives on the line every day, every day. They get out on a traffic stop, you don't know who's gonna pull a gun on you, happens every day now. Bottom line is, is that our command staff is not compatible to the command staffs of every other department. We argued about this, and I, I'm, I'm convinced, no matter what happened, we've been in a contract negotiations for two years. If we would've kept up with the minimum raises, the reasonable raises for these, these people to, to survive, we wouldn't be in this mess right now where we're having to put in a, a bigger raise. We have to do this. The polling that I did, and, and my campaigns did, before I ran for reelection, showed that the city of Springfield wants to be safe. The number one issue in this city is safety for people to walk from their car to the grocery store so they can, don't get hit in the head, and these people lay their, their lives on the line every day. This is ridiculous, we're even arguing about this. This, these salary adjustments, you know what it does? It puts them comparable to Peoria, right at the top, and you know what? It's a reasonable contract that we have to deal with. We have to make the sacrifice at this city council to give these people what they deserve. This is embarrassing, that we have to fight this stupid fight right now, be, for politics, not for, not for anything else. The money's in the budget, we passed two point three million to make the salary adjustments last term, we did it, and it's, it's something that has to be done, and show your guts on this city council and vote for those people.
Alderwoman Conley. Awkward to follow Alderman Red.
Awkward to follow Alderman Redpath on that. Thank you for expressing, I, I really was only planning to speak to the consent agenda item. And Chief, and, and, no, you don't need to come up. And, and Deputy Chief Dunkle, I want to thank you both because Chief, you expressed very clearly a consistent theme around this horseshoe, which is that we know that we have fine officers. We invest in training. We invest in quality people who do quality work on our streets. And one of the very, you are absolutely right. We asked you, find a way to retain these officers. And the fact that, that your, your staff went out and found a way to do that at no real impact to the, to this, this city. We're talking about on this consent agenda, this is a grant to, to do what we should have been doing, which is retaining the officers that have been brought, that have made a commitment to this city, that work here. And yes, Alderman Redpath, as you said, put their lives out there every single day for us. I have comments on, on, on the contracts. I, I wait until we get there. But Chief, I want to applaud you and your staff for being creative, for being flexible and for finding a way that we can thank and appreciate the, the men and women, or should I say, the women and men who come and serve our city every single day. I'm proud to vote for this, for this consent agenda that includes that, that grant. Thank you.
Alderman Williams, you're also signed up again. Do you want to speak again?
Oh, so I'm, I'm confused now on, so we're just talking about the grant right now? Or we're talking about the bonuses or where are we at, Mayor?
The consent agenda is what we're discussing.
Thank you. And one more thing, when, when did you send the email?
Last night, I think, at 10 o'clock.
Last night. Thank you.
Wow. I would prefer that we not toss up here, Alderman.
Sorry about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes and one voting present. Agenda item number 2023-443 remains tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is number 2023-430, an ordinance authorizing subrecipient grant agreement with better life, better living for kids and a payment in the amount of $215,000 pursuant to grant number 23-203.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
Yes, sir.
Just a, I was asked if we could move to, I'm just a little slow on the trigger here. I was a little asked to see if we could move agenda items 2023, 510 through 514, which are all reappointments or appointments to the front of the debate agenda.
So okay if I stop in the middle of reading that and do that? Okay. So we have a motion to move 2023, 510, 2023, 511, 2023, 512, 2023, 513, and 2023, 514 to move them to the front of the agenda. Can I get a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion on moving those items up? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda is item number 2023-510, an ordinance approving the reappointment of David Steckel to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-510 on final passage. Second, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Is Mr. Steckel here tonight? You want to come up and say hi again? He says no. Sorry I didn't see you back there, Dave.
I'm proud to have been a member of the Historic Sites for a number of years and look forward to continuing to serve. I think it's an important duty and I fulfill the role that's required of having an architect on the commission, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So we have a motion in a second. Voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-511, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Merrill L. Simmons to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-511 on final passage. Second, we have a motion in a second and I did see Mr. Simmons back there, so if he would like to come up.
He wore a nice jacket for today.
Good evening. I'm not going to give a long speech. I want to thank you for the opportunity to continue serving the city of Springfield.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-512, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Robert Emmel to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-512 on final passage.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and I did see Mr. Emmel here, so he's going to come up. He was here early tonight.
I got here early so I could get that valet parking. I gave my keys to somebody, I don't know.
I thought it was one of our police officers that are here.
I'm Bob Emmel. I wanted to thank everybody for allowing me to serve again on the Historic Sites Commission. It is a great honor and I look forward to serving again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-513, an ordinance approving the appointment of Michael Lillis to the Board of Managers of Oak Ridge Cemetery. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-513 on final passage.
Second.
We have a motion in a second and I did not see Mr. Lillis here, I don't think. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-514, an ordinance approving the appointment of Joshua S. Johnson to the Springfield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-514 on final passage.
Two moves. Second.
We have a motion in a second and I did see Mr. Johnson here. If you will come up, please introduce yourself to the council.
Good evening. I'm Josh Johnson. When I was asked to join the committee, I joined the board. I was excited and grateful for the opportunity, so thank you.
And will you tell the council where you work?
Oh, yes. Hickory Point Bank has a mortgage lender. Been working there for five years, been a mortgage lender for two. So my goal and job is to already provide people with housing opportunities, so that's all I left.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the appointment? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. Thank you all for your time this evening that came.
Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda is item number 2023-430, an ordinance authorizing subrecipient grant agreement with better life, better living for kids and a payment in the amount of $215,000 pursuant to grant number 23-203186 from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $3 million for the Community Connections Program for the Springfield Police Department. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023-430 on final passage.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Alderman Gregory.
I would like to introduce an amendment and I would ask corporation counsel to clarify.
So based on the discussion that we had at the committee of the whole meeting last week, I prepared proposed amendment two that you have in front of you. The purpose of this proposed amendment is twofold. One, it removes two whereas clauses that tie all three of these grant awards together by explaining the three recipients. The reason those are being stricken in this proposed amendment is because of the discussion that some older persons may be more inclined to vote for certain grant recipients than for others. So we are completely separating those three grant awards. In addition, in the actual operative language of the ordinances, we added language, making it subject to state approval of our amendment. So as we discussed, we're going to have to do a revised request up to the state and they would need to approve it before we provide this, these subrecipient grants. So this just makes a contingent upon that state approval.
Any discussion on the amendments, Alderman?
No, ma'am, but Alderman, Alderwoman Conley has some questions.
Nope, not on the amendment. I'm fine. No issues. I was waiting for the input.
Alderman Hanauer, you signed up to speak?
I'm not on the amendment. Just on the overall.
Okay. So do we have a motion for the, I don't know that, do we get a motion for the agenda item first and?
Two moves.
So we have a motion and a second for the agenda item. Now what about the?
Who's the second?
And then do we have a motion for the amendment?
We have a motion with Alderman Gregory.
I made a motion. Keep it for a second.
All right. So now we have a motion and a second for the amendment. So any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'm just going to do a voice vote on that. All those in favor of the motion of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, so now we have a motion and a second on the ordinance. Any discussion on that?
So we're, we're addressing ordinance 431 first, correct?
430.
I'm sorry.
Which is better life, better living for kids in the amount of $215,000. Are they? So Alderman Hanauer, do you have a discussion on the ordinance?
Yeah, I, I do. I guess my question is, is have we as a council in the past gotten involved in, in, introducing, you know, I, I guess pushing groups into different grants that we have? I, I'm concerned about, to me, the departments do the grants. We approve the, we approve the money if they're matching and, and we go forward. I don't know, you know, do we have, I don't know what, what the plan is for people to do. Has this, you know, we've gone through the whole grant process, right? And, and now this is just at the end, we're put, we're putting this in. And I'm just concerned, I don't want to get, number one, get in trouble with the State of Illinois or any other grant people. I have nothing against, I think that, I, I have nothing against any of these groups, but I just, I think that the precedent of us getting involved and, and picking, picking and choosing who we're putting in the grant, when a formal RFP, I, and I don't know, Chief, you'll have to ask, I'll have to ask you or, or Josh, I guess, but when, when we did this grant, was a formal RFP that went out to everyone? Did it, you know, did it, did, was there responses? How, how was it done? Because if, if there was and these guys didn't get chosen, then what we're doing is we're superseding the RFPs that we're putting out. And I have a real problem with that. And if not, why didn't we, shouldn't we, instead of picking these three, if we're going to reuse this money, should we not put a RFP out there and make sure that the Boys and Girls Club and the Salvation Army and, and any, any other group that might have a decent plan should have, have access to this? That, that's all I'm saying. Instead of, instead of us picking, picking the winners here. And that's in a sense what we're doing. We're, we're picking the winners. And all it takes is for one of the other groups to say, I didn't get an opportunity. And that, that's not right. And I, I don't know how the process was, Chief, I, I, I guess on the whole thing. And I don't want to get into a big, long explanation, but could you kind of give us a breakdown and, and how the, how people were chosen for this on the other stuff?
Sure. Well, what I would say about this particular $645,000, excuse me, that was originally earmarked for a different project, an actual physical space. We determined we're not going down that road, route. And essentially what I have said to the council, I know Alderman Gregory, Alderman Williams have been instrumentally providing details, is how, you know, how else can we spend this $645,000? And that's where some of these, the ordinances have been put forth. So there was never any sort of RFP as it pertains to this money whatsoever. The idea of the grant was to invest in awards two and three, specifically as it pertains to gun violence and community engagement, community partnerships and mentoring with our youth. That, that's really the 30,000 foot level of what the grant was designed for.
But do you think that we should have, now that we're, we're wanting to do something with the, different with this 645 or whatever it is, should we go out for an RFP to see what other groups would be interested in, in, you know, partnering?
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure if RFP is the right term or what exactly we would do. What I said last week was I don't care how we spend that money, as long as we can spend it to where my department is engaging our community members and we're, we're acting as mentors and being able to reduce violence and create relationships within our community. Outside of that, I, I don't, I am not concerned with how the money is spent, what the process is. I would defer to maybe the legal process of whether that's corporation counsel. I would defer to, you know, maybe it's Senator Turner on the fact that this was money that she put in the budget. I mean, again, I, I just want to get the groups identified, assuming that they meet everyone's perspective and then we move forward with the project. That's what I care about.
Anymore, Alderman Hanauer?
I'm, I'm good.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. I, I just had two quick questions, Chief. First, I just want to be clear, originally the 645 included a salaried officer position?
Yeah, that's how it was initially laid out. It was for the teen empowerment zone, so just to break it down a little bit, and I think some of you, I think all of you may have got some information on that. Part of that was like $98,000 was for an architect to come in and redesign some buildings that had been identified by previous administration. And then part of that, the remaining $545,000 was to be spent covering physical space, a salaried officer and some other sort of mentoring related activities.
Thank you. And then my other question, and, and this is just to make sure I didn't miss something. We were going to get a scope of work from the three applicants. I don't, I didn't see that I'd gotten that.
Now I do have one from Mr. Williams. He provided that, I think shortly after the council meeting last week. So I do have that and I apologize if I've not shared that with you all, but I would certainly be more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. I, I will just say, Alderman Gregory, I, I'm not comfortable with doing this way of allocating grant funds. To me, I'm much more comfortable with the amendment goes first, there's a process that the state has. It's, I'm just, I just want you to know, I, I really feel like procedurally, this is not the right way for us to, to move forward with this. And I'm saying that based on my experience in dealing with grants and, and the hiccups and hoops that, that go with that. So I appreciate, we have one scope of work. I thank you to Mr. Williams for doing that. But again, even without, absent a review from DCEO to ensure that what we're doing complies with what they want, I, I really feel like we're, we're preapproving something that we don't know what it is. And, and I'm not comfortable with that. So I just, I will be a no on, on all three of these and I want you to understand, it's not personal to the, the program or, or the concept because I think those are good and I look forward to seeing, to having, you know, the police department will be working through this and going through the amendment process. For me, this is, this is more procedural. So I just want you to be real clear that that's not.
Can I have a point of order, corporation counsel? I thought we agreed that last week, that we were, that if these were, were passed, that the money wouldn't be dealt out until there was a scope of work. And you've got that from Mr. Williams, so that's, that's a new, new point. But if we, if we agree and pass these other two, they're good as long as they come up with the scope of work. Is that correct?
That, that's not entirely accurate because we, we need to have their proposed scope of work that then the police department would take and ask for a revision to the grant. We'd send that up to the state and we would need that, that state approval with their scope of work, with what they would be doing. And once that's approved, then if it, once that approval came down, then we'd be able to enter into the subrecipient agreement.
So I misunderstand. So the scope of work that Mr. Williams gave to the chief has to be approved? But if we approve him tonight, he's got a scope of work in, as long as it's approved, then he gets the funds, correct?
That's correct. If this is passed, the state approves.
And if we agree, if we pass the other two, as long as they come up with their scope of work and it's approved by the council, and when that scope of work comes in and is submitted to the chief, then those would be, those funds will be delegated, correct?
Let me just clarify my concern here, Alderman. My concern is that it's not just our approval, it's also the approval of the granting agency, which is completely out of our control. I mean, I understand what you're trying to do here, but I just, I don't think that procedurally, this is a great way to handle this. We've not seen scope of work from, I haven't seen any of them. And I apologize, Chief, I didn't realize you had it and probably should have asked for it. But there's still so many other steps between the allocation, between us doing, taking action and the allocation of these funds, that I feel like we're just, we're moving out of order in this.
Well, I guess I'm asking for the procedure. And that's what I, I don't understand where we are. If it only required the scope of work, that's one thing, but if there's other steps that we've missed, then what do we-
There's an actual amendment to the grant that the state has to review and approve. And that hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, so I have Mr. Williams' scope of work and essentially what we would have to do, I've already spoke with our grant coordinator, through DCEO. And Mr. Williams had some questions. We got those lined out for him. And now essentially I would take that scope of work, I would write the addendum on how, or the amendment rather, on how we're going to reallocate the funds from the physical space to this programming and whatnot. And then it would be up to DCEO to say, yes, that's the appropriate use of those funds. We approve of this project, the scope of work meets our expectations, move forward with spending. So, yes, we're still waiting for DCEO ultimately to-
Any more questions, Alderman Redpath?
No, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I want to bring some clarification, because a lot of times we go back and forth and there'd be misconceptions and misunderstandings about this. The teen empowerment zone was an initiative that we wanted to create, not only to work with our police officers, but to really, you know, engage with teenagers as they grow up and build our future workforce. You know, from everything, from linemen to police officers to firefighters, et cetera, the things that we talk about daily. The building is substantially damaged. Some people say it was, you know, had some, you know, some things that looked like, you know, somebody went in there and did it on purpose, but whatever. So when I get that information, I'm just like, you know, it was already gonna be a heavy lift to, just as it was, to redevelop the building. So, you know, with it being so far damaged, you know, now I know that amount is, you know, probably out of our reach from a council standpoint. Still, we'll try to seek grants for it. The teen empowerment zone, you know, is more than just those buildings and the park. The zone includes that whole area, which is encompassed everything. You know, there wasn't a RFP, so to speak. The only reason that I brought this forth, because I know we're not gonna be going forth with the building. Through many, many, many conversations, this six forty-five was originally for programming in the building. We paid for the buildings with another grant, core grant, which is from the state, which is supposed to be used for job retention, et cetera, like what we were trying to do in the empowerment zone. Anywho, we're here at this point with these grants. It's a violence prevention grant. So we talk a lot about the six forty-five, but it's a three million dollar grant. And it has everything from community engagement piece like what we have here. There's another probably what, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars to, that we slotted for Mr. Newman, that we slotted for-
Several of our officers, yeah.
Several of our officers to lead different initiatives, whether it's sports teams, whether it's young ladies through the dollhouse. So everything was thought about. This is just this little section that we were trying to help in the violence prevention section. So in that particular community. So like I said, it includes equipment, anything violence prevention wise, to help our, help, you know, continue to decrease violence in our community. And our police have done a good job with that. We're trying to foster relationships with that. A big part of that, me as a leader, has to do with me, so I'm trying to do that and work with our police team and our community to work with our police team. One of the most proudest things that I will say, that I see is young men that I grew up with being police now. And now I'm sitting here, Alderman and stuff. And that's what we want our young people to look at, people they know from the community that look like them and are now police officers, you know? So it's not, you know, all bad. It's not, you know, we've seen some tragic times, but it's really an honorable profession. I've been through it, tried to do it twice. So again, back on point with these three groups was at the table. We tried to, you know, like I say, create a not-for-profit type of center. We're not-for-profits, who don't have buildings, we're approached about this thousands of times. People come up here before us a lot. So we're just trying to find a space that can accommodate as many as possible to run their programs, to grow their programs, to help us out in the community. That was the goal with that. So, you know, I said, well, let's split this six forty-five with three groups and let them go on programming. And we move on. We figure out what we're gonna do with these buildings, whether we tear them down, whether we sell them, whatever. Let's move on. I really don't want to have this big fight. So in any event, I encourage this council to pass these ordinances. They'll get Chief the scope of work. Chief will send it up to DCEO. If it's not approved, no harm, no foul. We're, you know, we're not out of nothing. The groups wouldn't get anything. And, you know, Chief will be back at the table trying to figure out, you know, what he wants to do with this, you know, with the money that wasn't approved. I will say, you know, going forth, I'd be interested in RFPs for any grants that we get within the city. And we put it out there and tell people to send us stuff. The three million dollar with the homeless initiative, you know, we didn't have any salaries or, you know, the things that we're asking these groups to do. But I'm okay with that. I'm okay, I'm okay with accountability. I'm okay with making sure that grantees do what they're supposed to do with grant money. And they are too. And if, I think for us, with the city, you know, when these opportunities come, we need to do all we can to make sure that they're successful within it. So with that said, you know, I encourage this council to vote for this small amount of money to go to three organizations that's helping youth in our community, doing a good job in our community, reputable in our community. And that's my spiel for the night. Thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to follow up behind Alderman Gregory. So he said that their scope of work is gonna be turning, is there a timeline that you're asking for? Because I know we spoke last week and corporation counsel said that someone was gonna be reaching out to these individuals, right? To get some information, or was that supposed to be Chief Scarlett reaching out to them?
I will take care of that. We did not lay out a timeline, but I think that's probably important that we move this project forward. And like I said, Mr. Williams proactively sent me his information, so I probably need to get in touch with the others to ensure what exactly their scope of work may look like. And here's, I would just want to add maybe one clarification point to what Alderman Gregory said. If DCEO says the project does not meet their, their scope of work does not meet their requirements, then it would be my goal to sit down with that individual organization to figure out how we can make it meet the requirements, so that this can work, because that's ultimately what it's about, is working together with our community.
My second follow-up is for you, Chief Scarlett. How long is this process? You said you've already sat down with DCEO. When you send Mike's information in, do they respond back to you in ten days, twenty days?
Ten may be a good guess, so they work, she works in the office occasionally, is kind of how it's explained. She did say the amendment process was rather lengthy and that that would take some time. But she, her name is Jenna, she assured me that they would help us with making any amendments.
Well, I am wanting to support these ordinances, hearing the clarifications that Alderman Redpath asked you and you were able to clarify. And to my understanding, you're already helping Mr., is it Andre, with the boxing gym? You guys are already taking steps to-
So we talk about our officers in our community, Officer Lamar Moore, he's our neighborhood police officer in P three hundred. He was interested in a mentorship opportunity with Ring of Champions Boxing, where essentially teach young kids about morals and values and also teach them to box at the same time and give them, you know, sort of that parental figure to look up to. So, yes, we're kind of starting that. It's a much smaller scale, but yes, I'm working through that.
Okay, I look forward to those scopes of work when you get them too. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I can't tell you how much I appreciate make you, you and your department and those involved making community engagement a part of this, because it is so important. So many times when we do grants that are related to law enforcement, it's for the ever-important man and woman power. It's for equipment and things of that nature. To have that component is key, because that's how we, I think, are more successful than other areas, because we do have community engagement here in Springfield. Just to point a clarification, Chief, I don't think you've been asked this pointedly. Your intention though, is to, regardless of what happens with these ordinances this evening, or if we were to hold them or pass them, or they fail, would be to reach out to DCEO, as you have, follow up with DCEO when you get the scopes of work and the budgets, and propose this amendment, and if it's approved, then come back to, I mean, if we weren't to pass it, weren't, were not to pass it, come back to council for approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess we just need to clarify what exactly needs council approval, right? I mean, there was items in the three million dollars that I didn't come to council approval on, because that was part of the initial three million dollar grant, so-
I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm trying to understand more clearly the, what the normal process is. I understand the change in the scope, Alderman, with the building and that, I get that. But typically what would happen is, three groups, I was using this as an example, would be chosen. It would go to DCEO, they would give their blessing, then it would come back, then it would come to council and we would be asked to approve it or not.
So you guys have approved a three million dollar grant through DCEO that had the initial-
Understand.
Right.
But since we're amending it, that would typically, under almost every other circumstances, that would be approved by the grantor and then it would come to council, right?
I guess to disperse the money, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, what I guess what I'm getting at is, what puts us in the strongest position with DCEO to have community engagement, which is what you're trying to accomplish here? And what I heard my colleague to my right, Alderwoman Conley, saying is she has a problem with the process. I mean, I think the community engagement, I don't think, I know, the community engagement part has to be a part of all this. It just makes sense. It's key for so many reasons. And, but if we could take a timeout, get the document, crying out loud, get the documentation and the scopes of work and the budget, and then if it gets approved, we come back and I would anticipate, based on the questions, the conversation I've heard, that, I obviously can't predict what this group is going to do, but that's the opposition I've heard. I haven't heard anybody opposing getting, having a community engagement component, being a part of this. It just seems to be a logical approach. And I'd like to, I would ask that that be considered, that's all.
Alderwoman Notriano?
Thank you, Chair. So when you wrote the grant originally, I'm sure you did all that work yourself, how did you decide what would go in it?
It would be, I think it would be great if we had Senator Turner standing right here, because this was like, three years ago we had this conversation, okay? So this is not like any other grant I've ever been a part of, right? Senator Turner sat down with myself, the former mayor, two Aldermen and said, I have three million dollars that I'm going to write into the state budget. And I want it to be applied towards gun violence, violence reduction, community engagement, that sort of stuff. What ideas do you guys have? We came up with a list of sort of, you know, SPD stuff that would help curb gun violence. We came up with some community stuff. This teen empowerment zone was all part of that. And so that's really how this process started. Typically, yes, when you apply for a grant, you write out paragraphs and paragraphs of how this money's going to be spent. That did not happen in this case.
No RFPs or anything like that?
Correct. Yeah, I think you guys-
It was like you just thought, or y'all thought of what you wanted to do?
That's correct.
Great. And then my next question is probably for our corporation counsel. So if we pass this and we don't get the money from the state, is the city obligated at all?
No, we would not have to pay two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to any of these entities if the state does not approve our amendment.
Okay. That's all.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, Chief, do we, do we take a chance of irritating DCEO by doing this and possibly losing the grant? Or, I mean, I don't know, I don't get involved in grants too often, but I don't want, we don't want to make them mad and lose the whole thing.
Well, I think we just have to abide by their process, which is apply for an amendment or an addendum to the grant. They may say, no, you can't do that, and then, you know, we're not going to spend the money. It's, I would certainly defer to their expert advice on if we can in fact use the funds that we have towards the project that we're asking for. So if that makes sense.
Then the last thing I would say is, you know, we just had a conversation about fiscal analysis and stuff. We don't, we're voting on stuff that we haven't seen what their plan is. We haven't seen a budget, you know? And this is, you know, this is something that, you know, it is a grant, but, you know, we're back to where, okay, do we need it or do we don't? And, you know, you can't do it for one and not the other and that. So that's why I have a hard time, you know, going forward with this. I just, you know, to me, it needs to, we need to have everything so we know and the chief's comfortable with what he wants to put forward, you know, before we pass this. Because we could be passing something and the chief doesn't like what they put in. That doesn't really flow with our grant. That's the concern I have.
Yeah, and I would certainly, I'm not going to make any sort of amendments or addendums to DCEO if it's not a project that fits in line with this grant and with our agency and the community engagement.
And then how does that, how does that go when we, when we're doing something that, you know, are we telling him, we want him to do it regardless? That's where us getting involved in this at this level is tricky. And I agree, I think the problem I have more than anything is I'm not, I'm kind of like Alderwoman Conley in the fact that I don't, I feel like our process here is all, is backwards or something, you know? We should have the budget, you should be comfortable with what you're doing. And then you bring them to us, present it, and then we say, okay, go for it, let's go, you know? That's the way I feel it should happen. So that, and I know you're, it's not you, Chief, but I'm just, that's just my concern, so.
I certainly don't have a problem beginning the amendment or addendum process and getting, taking Mr. Williams' information and anyone else that submits it and applying for the amendment. I think that's the first step in this whole process, is let's get, let's take this project, let's put it on paper. Let's see if we can get an amendment through DCEO and move forward with that.
So, Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Williams?
Yes, Mayor. So, you know, I'm just truly amazed at the gamemanship and the plan, that people not taking things serious. Because we've talked about this little bit amount of money and dealt with much greater money with less compassion and less financial responsibility. But this little piece out of three million dollars, the day the senator called us and said, we got three million dollars to take, at the time Springfield was experiencing gun violence. We experiencing all them things. You remember, Chief? There were sixteen organizations at the table in the beginning. Mike Feline got out, Tiffany got out, all of them got out for different reasons. It ain't like nobody else was thought of. And it's amazing that every piece of that grant is working, except the community engagement. Because people are playing games and been on the council forever, but they don't understand that. Wow, I'm confused. Well, I don't understand it. I just need to see a scope of work. But yet we pass money all the time and we don't see scope of work. Tonight I just bring up fiscal analysis that we just got my email last night, with much, much more money. So we need to quit playing the games. These guys are trying. They are trying to meet the requirement. Of course, the agency, and that agency was chosen by that line on that state budget that gave doors to three million. It didn't have to be that, wait, see, it could have been DHS, it could have been whatever. That's the route that it was took. It was me and Sean that told the senator, we wanted to be with the Springfield police because we wanted legitimacy, because we already know what we faced with everything we have. So let's go through our chief and this is how this thing materialized. It wasn't about no being favorable and leaving people out. It was a serious, honest attempt to do something about the violence and in particular, the gun violence that was going on at that time, back then. You know, not to say it hasn't improved or be critical, I'm just saying, we still stuck on it. The buildings came, the mitigation changed, I don't know, all of a sudden we ain't doing the buildings. And so you guys really legitimately tried to use, find a better way to keep using that last part that could keep community engagement together. And here we are tonight, asking a thousand questions and being confused over such a small amount of money that ain't even the money like the money we've really been spending, without asking for fiscal analysis, without being responsible. We won't ask about all that other stuff, but we'll pick the heck out of money that has to go to- the heck out of money that has to go to community engagement for the east side. The two wars, that's what the Senator said. I want the gun violence stopped and war two and three. We signed off on it. Chief, you signed it. I signed it. Do you remember this? We signed that piece.
Yeah, my signature was not on that, but I certainly approved it, absolutely.
Yes, right. So we tried to go through our department to make it legit and do a good thing for the community. So we wouldn't be looking like we're out here just doing anything with money because the Senator found some money for us. And we still are faced with, this is a shame. That's all I'm gonna say. This is a shame that you've been on the council this long and you guys don't understand the process, what's before and after. And I sit up here and everything from kids M to you name it, I don't get into the scope. Because I feel like, well, wait a minute. That's why we have staff. That's why we have staff to take care of all that and trust you and do that. But they'll sit up and say, oh, beautiful you are in your department. And all that didn't take us through pure hell to get just a small amount of money. It does not make sense to me and it's really telling to me. And we need to quit playing games. This ain't hard. The man said, if D C O don't like it, they not gonna approve it. Redpath said last time, can it be contingent upon? And we said yes. And we still get here and we still playing games. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
I'm gonna call on Alderman Gregory who signed up next, but I'm gonna ask that the Aldermen and Alderwomen address the Chair, not each other. Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Yeah, Alderman Williams did a good job. And I would just say that, you know, on our last three million dollar grant, Alderman Hanauer, there was no budget, any of that in that. It was just what the company is about. They got all their state paperwork and all that stuff. That was all that was in the package. We passed it with flying colors, you know? And I, and I'm just asking for the same treatment. That's all I'm asking for, bro. The same treatment for these organizations. If the scope doesn't meet, they won't be approved. No big deal. No harm, no foul because I, I expect people to do things right, just like all of us want people to do things right. And I encourage this council to vote so we can send this through. We can, she's gonna write it up. It will be approved at D C O. If it was, if it's not, he'll go back, he'll, he'll, they'll make some tweaks and they'll send it back up. It happens all the time. This is a normal process with grants. And I just, I just ask that, that these organizations be given a chance to, to execute and do good with our community and we can keep growing. That's all. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Quick question for the Chief. Is there anything stopping you from submitting amendments on this grant? Does, does D C?
Not enough hours in the day, I think maybe.
Okay, other than time and I do again.
No, absolutely not, no.
I mean, there, there is no council approval that's required for you to submit an amendment to D C O for approval of scope of works for, for amendments to a grant?
I would certainly say no, but I would defer to Corporation Council.
That's correct. There's, there's nothing prohibiting us, especially if our initial grant is not feasible. We can, we can propose an amendment.
Right. So there, nothing is stopped by asking that the Chief take this through the grant process prior to us.
Let's pass it and let's go.
Voting and allocating it.
Let's pass it and let's go.
Okay, I'm done. Although, no, I do want to say, I'm very clear on this process and I do understand how this works. That's why I have concerns about passing an open-ended ordinance that just relies.
But you didn't ask that last week. You didn't ask that last week. You always, you always the one.
Alderman Gregory, please let the Alderwoman finish.
I very specific, I very specifically asked for this last week. And I very specifically asked last week if amendments can be submitted with or without council approval. There are processes in place. I'm not commenting on the, anything in this amendment except the process. And, and I think if we're going to talk about disingenuous, I'm going to say it's disingenuous to imply that anyone around this horseshoe has a problem with the community engagement portion of this, of this grant, or the efforts that the police department has taken, or to be fair, the efforts that Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory have taken to increase engagement and decrease violence in, in their wards and in our city. Your wards are our city. So I do take, I do take a little bit of umbrage with that allegation because that is not appropriate. I am very concerned that we get this through the right way. I trust, as did Alderman Gregory and Williams, in the professional decisions and the professional guidance of our police department. All I'm asking is that you work through this process or, or your staff with D C E O so we have something that's finalized to vote on. I, I don't want to micromanage how this happens. I just want to make sure that this is allocated in the right way. Nothing we do tonight slows or hinders your ability to get those amendments done. And that's all I want to say. I'm sorry. Nope, I'm not gonna say is that, that one, it's narking.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask, Chief Scarlett, are you fine with how this is being moved forward?
Well, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. I wish I was never up here. What I see is in the middle of.
That probably was an uncomfortable question.
A tug of war situation, but I want to do what's best for our city. And if, again, I, I said this last week, I defer to the ten of you living with the mayor to determine how we use these funds. If we think this is the best, and I certainly have no problem with a couple of these organizations. And, and I will certainly take the information that Mr. William provided. I will make sure that we get that written up and we'll move forward with it.
Thank you for answering that. And Madam Mayor, I'm going to respect your wishes to address you and not Alderman Williams. But I want to be clear, especially when he just looked at me and said, the kids M, I'm making sure because I know people are watching tonight. I'm in support of helping our black community out because that is what this is about tonight. But just like he pointed at me and told me, I'm teaching her a lesson and voted no, I'm not doing that to him tonight. I am in support of doing this and moving it forward. I just wanted to clarify that. Because we sit up here and ask to respect each other, but then you do stuff like that. That doesn't help us.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Rockford.
So Chief, Mayor, if, if we were to pass the original, get the original grant and the six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars was in there for the teen empowerment, what would, what would we be doing with the money? Do we have any idea what we would have done?
It was designed to go towards a physical space.
Right.
To hire a police officer that would be a mentor, to provide some programming. I can't remember what else was mentioned in there. But, you know, the teen empowerment zone was the larger concept and this was a small portion of that.
So my, my question is, is if, if we get this grant as is with the six forty-five, can you go in there and disperse the money to these organizations that way without going through ordinances and amending this, this, this grant? Is my question.
Yeah, I want to be very clear. One, I'm gonna abide by all the grant laws and anything that pertains to how the grant money is to be dispersed. And yes, well, I don't know about, again, I would defer to Corporation Council on whether an ordinance is needed. But we can identify how the money could be used as long as it fits the parameters of the grant, which in this case is gun violence, violence reduction, and utilize the resources in our community to spend it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions, Alderman Rockford?
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
So it's, the intent of this whole thing was to direct this money to these programs. It was directed, it's directed to the east side. Senator Turner made that clear that this is where I want this money to go. So this is where this money really should go. And, and how the process worked, I know it's, 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 it's different, but I feel comfortable if we pass these things, if we pass them or don't pass them, I can feel comfortable that Chief Scarlett's gonna follow up with the scope of work through, up through the chain of command and, and we'll be on track. This, we're battling over something that we're not gonna be able to use anywhere else, but in this, it, it goes here. So, you know, I don't support all three of these ordinances, but I do support one, maybe two of them. The problem I have, Mr. Williams put together a scope of work, that's what we asked him to do. There's more stuff that, that has to be done, that's fine, we'll get to it. I think we vote or don't, vote for it or don't vote for it. We get these things on the table to vote. But remember, this money's supposed to go there. So we're arguing over semantics. And I get the, I understand you're uncomfortable with the process, but this is what we were left with. Now we go forward. If we vote this up or vote it down, from now on, we gotta have a process better than what we have right now, right? So that's where we take this thing. So vote it, vote for it or vote against it. But let's get this thing moving and try to get the money in the right place. That's all I'm asking.
Alderman Carlson.
Chief, if I, if I understand this correctly, you feel there are a couple of backstops here should we pass this tonight as far as it coming back? I mean, I know we have one scope of work for one of the three. But I heard you correctly that earlier that some of this stuff still has to come back.
Well, it has to be approved by D C E O, right? And again, I will clarify and make this very clear. This money will be spent as per state law, as per the grant and as per D C E O requirements. So yes, I will ensure that that happens and that they approve whatever program we put for.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think many of you would agree in this room that I'm not one that wants to be divisive ever. Try to find compromise and work with all of you. And I, I get discouraged when I hear comments about assumptions and people being divisive and, and always try to look for a way to, may not be the way we propose it, but a way to get something passed is for the betterment of the city. The end game here, the work that you two gentlemen and others have done on this, trying to have the community engagement is critical, has to be done. I don't want to be repetitive. But we just got handed this amendment this evening, literally right before the meeting started. And during the debate, thank you for making it take a little longer than sometimes we do, I took a look at page two of the amendment. Section one, the new language says that the city council hereby authorizes pending state approval, a subrecipient agreement, and then it lists the entities. So under normal circumstances, we would have a grant being brought to us where the entities that we're partnering with has been approved by the grantor. We're doing, you are correct, Alderman Hanauer, we are doing things backwards here. However, this amendment, whoever drafted and put that part in, may indeed address the issue that I've heard and repeated or stated in different ways this evening. It does give the Chief an opportunity to move forward, make the application. If D C E O does not approve, then I guarantee you're gonna be back. Somebody's gonna be back with another ordinance with a different organization. Or, as you stated earlier, there's going to be, have to be a sit down with that particular entity and change some things around. Because that language is in here, I would prefer that we follow the normal grant procedures and we get our partners in place. And, but this is something that's extremely important. And because there is a check and balance in here, I'm willing to consider it. But don't ever accuse me of being divisive, ever.
Are you talking to me?
Alderman, please.
Talking just to myself, I guess.
Please make him address you because if he's talking to me, I'm gonna talk back.
Because Mr., because Madam Chair, that's not the way I operate.
Understood.
And I'm offended by it. And again, willing to work, glad to see the language, glad to see the amendment. It makes logical sense. And I will indeed consider this proposal this evening. Thank you.
Any other discussion on agenda item number twenty, two thousand twenty-three dash four thirty? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept item number two thousand twenty-three dash four thirty with proposed amendment number two. Seeing that there's no other discussion, all those in favor vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes with nine voting yes and one voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash four three one, an ordinance authorizing subrecipient grant agreement with one in a million incorporated and a payment in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars pursuant to grant number twenty-three dash two zero three one eight six from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of three million dollars for the Community Connections Program for the Springfield Police Department. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash four three one on final passage. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we think we would have a.
There is an amendment.
On this one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, there's an amendment on this, the same amendment as four thirty.
So do I have a motion for the?
I have a motion to introduce the second amendment.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for amendment number two to be adopted, which is similar to the previous one. Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Donlin.
Does that include a similar page two?
Yes. Any other discussion on the amendment? So we're just gonna take a voice vote to accept the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, any discussion on the grant number two thousand twenty-three dash four three one as amendment, as amended in amendment number two? Alderman Hanauer.
As I stated last week, there's, it's nothing against Mike and one in a million. You guys do a great job. But we had a discussion at our first meeting about, about Alder, Alder Peoples and people up here on the horseshoes, family members getting grant funds. And it was decided, it seemed to be decided at that time that was not the direction we were gonna go. And, and I'm gonna honor that. So I'll, I'll be a no on this one.
Alderman Williams.
Who, who, who was the family or, and, and, and who was the other situation you keep bringing up?
Alderman, please direct.
Okay, Madam Mayor, who is the family he keeps referring to on this council that got told no?
I believe he's referring to a mural that was gonna be painted on a building that my husband is part of, a limited liability corporation that owns the building. And it was just gonna be a painting. I believe Alderman Rockford was the person that had a problem with it. So this is cash. So I think the Alderman has a problem with cash going to a similar situation.
Okay, because I was gonna say, first we need to look at the type of monies that we was talking about. That was a Scott Dial situation, wasn't it?
No money, it was just a painting.
Well, we was getting money for the painting.
No. S D V B was paying for everything, no money.
I never remember us saying that that was gonna be a rule. So I didn't even know how it got resolved, Mayor. I didn't know how it got resolved. I just know, to this day, I have, still haven't seen the full list. So it keeps coming up and, and, and then my brother in my name keeps being a part of this. It's obvious I'm gonna be voting present. And I feel this council knows I'm gonna be voting present. Because that's the right thing to do on this situation. Now maybe your family pulled out or whatever, I don't know. I didn't know how that got resolved. Thank, so that's what I want to get on the record. Thank you.
That arrangement was made before I was mayor.
Okay.
So the previous mayor was a part of that. So my family.
Well, pull on it, somebody pulled it, I don't know. It wasn't me.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Okay. So we have a motion and a second for item number two thousand twenty-three dash four three one to be moved forward with amendment number two. The voting will now be open. All those in favor vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with seven voting yes, two voting no, and one voting present. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash four three two, an ordinance authorizing subrecipient grant agreement with the Springfield Park District and payment in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars pursuant to grant number twenty-three dash two zero three one eight six from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of three million dollars for the Community Connections Program for the Springfield Police Department. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash four thirty-two on final passage. So move. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. And then Alderman, do you have an amendment on this one?
Yes, I do. I'd like to introduce amendment number three.
So we have a motion for an amendment. Second. And a second for the amendment. So discussion first on the amendment for item number two thousand two three four three two. Any discussion on the amendment?
It does have the same page, number two, and the same information as the other two, just for clarification.
So no discussion on the amendment. So we'll just say, those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Now we will have a discussion on the agenda item as amended, two thousand twenty-three dash four three two. Any discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none signed up to speak, the voting will now be open. Those in favor, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. And Alderwoman Conley, sorry. And the motion passes with six voting yes and four voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash five oh six, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with Fred Wanless LLC for attractive land with no assigned address located at parcel index two two's dash zero eight dash four seven nine dash zero zero five for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the meeting and go to a public hearing for annexation, for the annexation agreement and an annexation, an annexation in general.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into a special meeting. All those in favor, please say, or all, to go to a public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So we have the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this annexation? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, so we're back to the regular, all those in favor. Yeah, not the whole meeting. Those in favor, to adjourn the public meeting, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please vote nay. Public hearing, sorry, not public meeting, public hearing. No nays. So now, the chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash five zero six on final passage.
Second.
We have a first and a second, any discussion on the item itself? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash five zero seven, an ordinance annexing certain described real estate property with no assigned address located at parcel two two dash zero eight dash four seven nine dash zero zero five and owned by Fred Wanless LLC. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash five zero seven on final passage. We have a motion and a second, did you get both of those?
Yep.
Let's go, okay. Any discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash five two one, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-six of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding section thirty-six dash zero five dash A relating to hiring preferences for residents. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash five twenty-one on final passage.
So move.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Alderman Williams.
Yes, so did H R ever figure out how we're going to do the preference?
So the preference will be given, so if there is, this would be during the moratorium and when the moratorium is lifted, anyone who is applying for a position would get first preference at interviews before anyone, anyone who lives in the city will get interviews before anyone who does not live in the city. And they would get first preference for hiring.
So that, so there, there'll be interview first, that's the preference?
Mm-hmm.
But then after their interview, they'll still interview the other candidates?
Only if those candidates that live in the city are found unqualified.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion on the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, one voting present. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash five twenty-two, an ordinance approving salary increases in the excess of five percent during the twelve-month period for the Police Department Command Staff. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash five two two on final passage. We have a motion and a second, did you get those?
Yeah.
Any discussion on item number 2023 dash five two two? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, one voting present. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash five two three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Springfield and the Police Benevolent and Protection Association, unit number five, from March first, two thousand twenty-two through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item 2023 dash five twenty-three on final passage.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, one voting present. The next item on the agenda is item number 2023 dash five three two, an ordinance authorizing the extension of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Health, for the Animal Control Services and authorizing payment for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four in the amount of $284,031.28 for the Office of Budget and Management. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2023 dash five three two on final passage.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, discussion, Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so now, this is just paying, catching up.
Just fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, this, we're not agreeing to do that new with them yet. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if there's anyone from Sangamon County here tonight.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, and, and I understand, again, this is for services, as Alderman Williams clarified, that have already been rendered. I will say, though, that I did get outreach and from constituents with concerns about when they've reached out, and very similar to Alderman Williams, had a call to the animal control, delays in getting responses. One specific concern was loose cats in a neighborhood where they know the person who someone is letting them out is feeding the cats outside, which is attracting, obviously, other animals, raccoons, you know, whatnot to come to, to the area. And significant concerns with animal control, being able to be a participant in, in curtailing that activity and also, you know, capturing cats that are, that are running around the neighborhoods loose. So, just want to make that point tonight, because I did promise I would. I also think it's something that we need to make sure that we follow up with Sangamon County as we look into our next agreement with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I reached out to animal control and, or at Sangamon County, and Jeff Willhite, he's probably listening tonight. Of course he is. I don't know why, I, I don't, I don't know how he got that short straw, but. He gave me some statistics, the animal control expenses annually is 1.8 million dollars. City payment is $284,000 and change, these are kind of rounded. Our portion is 15.54% of, of what goes into it. Now, the calls for services from the city, the, the total calls for services for the county is fifty-four ninety. All right? Of those, the city makes up forty-one ninety-three, which is seventy-six percent. And so what they wanted to say is, just, you know, we're not paying what the amount of call, for the amount of call percentage-wise compared to the rest of the county. So, you know, just think about that when we, when we go forward. And if, if, if you want a copy, I'm, I'm happy to share it with you.
That's fine.
So I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair, and I will just respond to whoever's listening that as a resident of the City of Springfield, we're also residents of the County of Sangamon. I, we pay, the city pays this payment to the county. All, all of my pets have their, their rabies tags, which is another payment that I make to the county. I also pay my county taxes, so the majority of the residents live within the City of Springfield limit. So, obviously, that's where the majority of the calls are going to come from. And, and I appreciate that this is, you know, a larger expense than just this separate payment that the city makes to subsidize animal control. I, I absolutely appreciate that, but I don't think that, we should not think of ourselves as just because we live in the city, we're not separate from being in the county also. We are residents of Sangamon County also, so. And I would say that to Jeff, I hope, hopefully Jeff heard me, and, and I appreciate you bringing that in. I understand the numbers, I, again, the concern was that, from a constituent, specifically with loose cats, and, and obviously, Alderman Williams has brought up with, with dogs that need responses. So I do believe, we have someone in the audience who talks about loose, loose dogs also, so.
They might be the one feeding them, I don't know.
Just in case she doesn't want to get up tonight and talk, I'll, I'll mention, I'll mention Alice.
She probably will, but. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, well said, thank you, Mayor, well said, Alderwoman. You know, we're the largest part of the county, of course, we're going to have more calls. And, and I have a cat woman too, so, so thank you.
That you're related to?
No.
Oh. Mine is my mom, Alderman. Any other discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, the voting will now be open, all those in favor, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Donlin.
I'd like to make a motion to send back to committee, agenda item twenty-two thirty-three five thirty-seven.
We have a motion and a second to send back to committee, item number 2023 dash five thirty-seven. Any discussion on sending that back to committee? All those in favor, please say aye to send that back.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
I'm sorry, I, I was trying to click request to speak, can I just ask why we're sending it back to committee?
Alderwoman Conley.
I, I just, I don't, why would this?
Still waiting on some documents from the developers that we're sending it back to committee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? So we got ayes, all in favor, aye again, please, thank you.
Slow aye, yes.
So the motion passes to go back to committee, item number 2023 dash five thirty-seven. The chair will now entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda item number 2023 dash five seven one, which is an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing the execution of contract number P W twenty-four dash zero six dash three five with A F E Construction LLC for the construction of an addition in a roof at the African American History Museum in an amount not to exceed $822,225 for the Office of Public Works. Can we get a motion to places on first reading?
So move.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor to put this on, do you have discussion?
Just really quickly, does this relate to the same grant that's in the next ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll be a present, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, can we just do a voice vote on this?
Well, yes, but if there's any nays.
Okay, any, just, any, so you're, you're done, you're not signed anymore? Okay, gotcha. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays to put this on first reading? And then we have one present from Alderwoman Conley. Okay. The chair will now entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, agenda number 2023 dash five seven two, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of a modification to Illinois Department of Natural Resources Grant Number M C twenty-one dash zero three three in the amount of $249,000 for additional funding for the Springfield and Central Illinois African American History Museum Expansion Project and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of $249,000 for the Office of Public Works upon approval of modification to grant number M C twenty-one dash zero three three. So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this being added to first reading? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And we have one present, Clerk Lesko.
And number A again?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there any unfinished business to come before the city council this evening? Alderwoman Purchase.
Well, yes. I have, well, tis the season. The holiday walks are kicking off this Saturday, and of course, we have the lighting up the tree with Santa, so I encourage all my colleagues and the entire City of Springfield to come and join us. And then we have, on December twenty-third, is the first Wednesday that we start our holiday walks. And then I do have two more announcements from the Y M C A. They are collecting donations for laundry detergent for the Central Illinois Food Bank to help families and seniors in need, so please drop off any laundry detergent at either the downtown or Carisoda's lobby now until December first. And then I'm mentioning this last one because it's next Tuesday. Next Tuesday is Giving Tuesday, and the Y M C A will be having a donation drive for the Strong Kids Fund that is help for at-risk and underserved kids during the live AM Springfield Radio on fourteen fifty AM and ninety-two point three FM from six AM to nine AM. So stop by, or you can call with your donation, so I'm encouraging everybody to make a small donation. And last but not least, Happy Thanksgiving and gobble gobble.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to find out, do we know exactly when the ice skating rink will be open?
That I have not heard, but it looks good, so make sure you drive past.
So, wonderful, looking forward to it. I'd also like to thank Phoenix Center for organizing and inviting, inviting me to the, and I guess the Mayor and Alderwoman Purchase were there, to the Transgender Day of Remembrance yesterday. It's an important event to remember people whose, whose lives have been lost and, and certainly a moment for our community to extend a bit of compassion and acceptance to other fellow members of our, of our community. So, thank you for that invitation and, and for Phoenix Center for the work that they do.
Thank you.
Any new business to come before the city council, any council members? I have one thing, I want to, as you also saw when you walked in tonight, Master Sergeant Bill Lee at the Sangamon County complex is your Toys for Tots coordinator this year. And so we had a Q R code on the screens which we will put up every meeting before Christmas so that you can donate to Toys for Tots if you want. Also, the county is going to be putting donation boxes in City Hall. We will be a donation spot for Toys for Tots. And then I promised Master Sergeant Lee that I would recommend that if any of you want to donate your time during the holiday season, the Toys for Tots has a one-stop shop, and it will be on Friday, December fifteenth, from ten AM to seven PM. And they need volunteers to work at this one-stop shop to assist families that come in to get toys for Toys for Tots. It'll be a Christmas shop at the White Oaks Mall, so if you would like to contact Bill Lee at Sangamon County, he would love to have some volunteers. And there is a website that we will put in our newsletter that you can click on to volunteer as well. Alderwoman Conley, you have new business.
No, I don't, I just didn't get taken off, sorry.
Alderwoman Notriano, do you have new business?
I do, I just wanted to share with everyone that last week I was invited to Lee School to participate in their family reading night. And it was wonderful to meet the students and faculty and administrators. They're doing an excellent job out there. And I just wanted to plug them for their commendable rating and just highlight them as a real gem of Ward Six. Thank you.
Any other new business to come before the council? Okay, citizen signed up to address the council, Nick Dodson? Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name and your address for the.
Sure, my name's Nick Dodson, I live in Ward Eight, I don't like to give out my direct address, I've lived there for fourteen years now.
Sounds great.
All right. Good evening, Springfield City Council members, thank you for letting me speak. This summer, over five hundred residents came out to what ended up being the largest zoning meeting in Sangamon County Board history. I was lucky to be there that evening, and there was a very common theme among members of the community. Significant safety, health concerns, skepticism, and direct opposition to carbon capture and sequestration with CO2 pipelines. Nearly every community member who stood up for, to offer public comment expressed strongly that they did not want these types of projects in our region. They were clear, and they were united in their opposition. The Sangamon County Board listened and heard their constituents and responded by unanimously passing a moratorium on CO2 pipelines until more guidance on safety and regulations were available at a federal level. We have recently learned that C W L P has been using drones in conducting soil testing for a carbon capture pipeline installation on the west side of Pond Road. Now I watch city council on it quite regularly, and I've never heard a mention of a local-level CO2 pipeline, and I see that as a pretty big red flag. Our area continues to be targeted by large-scale carbon storage. Carbon capture operations may well be allowed, I'm sorry. Carbon capture operations may be well beyond C W L P's scope to manage safely as we have seen their inability to manage coal waste with recent examples like the leaching coal ash ponds and the fly coal ash waste release in 2021. Waste storage and management is not an organizational forte. Due to the dangers of carbon storage and transportation that can result in explosions, asphyxiation of humans and wildlife, and the complexity and the energy expense in piping carbon underground, meetings to inform the public must be held to ensure transparency by C W L P. The public deserves to be a part of this process since it will directly affect their safety, community health, their utility rates, and the future of climate stability. It is incredibly troubling that C W L P is seriously considering such a risky investment and doing so without transparent discussion on, or public input. We know that the D O E funding has been awarded, but receiving millions of taxpayer dollars does not mean that our city should move forward with such a risky investment without rigorous and transparent financial and legal analysis, environmental considerations, and public input. The majority of carbon capture sequestration projects attempted to date have gone over budget, have either failed and been canceled, or have been significantly underperformed as emissions reduction strategies. Here are my questions. Where is the city in assessing the feasibility in a full carbon capture retrofit at Dahman Plant? And has an economic and legal analysis been done? When will this decision be made, and will there be a public engagement process? Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Alice Ramey.
As you were right, Mayor, I am going to talk about cats and the dogs and the chickens and the hogs and all that, okay? But I want to wish you all a very blessed Thanksgiving and that everyone will have a lot of gobble gobble. There is a house that's right next to mine that feeds the cats every day, every day. And I had cats having babies in my backyard. So, I don't know where you got your, you got his figures, but a friend of mine went out there to adopt a dog, and it was a beautiful dog. In fact, I think it was a little bit more than what people thought they would have, it was a reindeer dog. And they charged that lady $750 for that dog. Okay? Now, if they charged that amount. Now, if they charge that much for every adopted dog, then why are they not doing a better job in taking care of everybody? As I told you once before, if they don't do their job and come and pick up dead dogs, or whatever the case may be out there, a dog hog, then they're not doing their job for the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that you're giving them. And I know we can find somebody in this town that has a place that we can take the dogs and have it here in Springfield, Illinois. I'd rather see them have the two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and odd cents in Springfield than in the Sangamon County. And that's my way of saying, it's time that we bring home the money to our town and not put it anyplace else. I know you don't like that because it's terrible, because they don't take care of the dogs as well as people think they do. Because one of the dogs that the, my next, uh, the next-door neighbor down the street got, she had to shave it because they didn't do anything with it, okay? Their hair was matted and, and toenails were all clawing around, paws. That's not taking care of the dogs. And to spend that much money for them, no way. I go, I go to Taylorville to get my rabies shots, okay? Not my rabies shots, my dog's shots, okay? I saw. But that's the way I feel about it, and I understand people like to feed the dogs, like to feed the cats. We even have a hog, do you know that, in our neighborhood, whether she, he knows about it or not, okay? Thank you, y'all. You all have a beautiful night. Thank you, Mayor.
The next person signed up to speak is Mary Ellen Strack. You can state your name and your address or your ward if you want.
Okay, I'm Mary Ellen Strack, and I have twenty-five seventeen Soleil, and Brad Carlson is my ward. And thank you for the opportunity to be here. I had things I wanted to pass out, can I pass these out for you to see?
Sure, and actually Nicole will come around and help you so you can speak if you want.
Okay, that'd be great. I'm a visual person, this is about our gallery, the Pharmacy Gallery and Art Space in, uh, six twenty-three East Adams Street. And a little bit of history about our gallery, it started in two thousand eleven with two guys looking for studio space. And they found something at Passfield and South Grand, and they said, hey, this is a cool spot. And the other guy said, yeah, it's the pharmacy. And so that's where we have the name, the pharmacy, it has stuck. And so we are now, since two thousand eleven, two thousand eighteen, we moved into the location we are now. Pipe dream, wouldn't it be cool if we can own this building? And that pipe dream has come true. And thanks to a lot of hard work, Janet Segrow and Diane Schlehan, you know, the gallery wouldn't be there if it wasn't for them, they've really worked hard to keep us together. And they have a vision, and as you can see, I have it stated on here. This is a picture of our gallery, and it's beautiful, and I just love the place, and I love working hard. We're really unique in that nobody gets paid. We are here, in fact, we pay to be at the gallery, and our hopes is that people will come and enjoy, and gee, maybe buy something, but, you know, it's, it's just a wonderful place. We want to be an important part of downtown, and we want to stay and, you know, be a viable part. We want to grow to be, um, Community Arts Center, and we want to have some art therapy, and that's why we were able to get the building and to expand. Up until just a couple months ago, we were fine with homeless people. We didn't have a problem, we got along fine. When recycled records moved or closed, it got, it went sideways, and people were trying to take over. People were getting mad. Um, as you can see from the pictures, it's not a pretty sight, we've put up with a lot lately. Um, one of our persons finally got upset with one of the guys and said, quit calling me, you know, Queenie, I'm not your Queenie, and, you know, we don't appreciate you parking next door because people walk by, they don't want to come into our gallery because we have a bunch of homeless now hanging out, and it's been a problem. Some of the, uh, homeless are very violent, and I've seen violence myself. Um, it's hard because when you call, they'll say, well, are they there now? And no, they move fast. The homeless know how to, to manipulate things, they know how to strike and run. And I guess it's an impossible task because I know you people, uh, the city has to give them rights. I know the homeless have rights to be there. But it's kind of hard for our membership to see that when they see all their goings-on out in front. And then if we want to put things out in front, we have to get a permit to sell, you know, it's kind of hard that way. But all said and done, what I want is more ayes maybe in the area, and maybe this too shall pass. Uh, I just talked to the lady at the, um, retro place that's two ho, two doors down, and, uh, the person there, Darnell, he said he's had permission to stay there. Well, I talked to her today, and she said, no, that's not true. Darnell's homeless, he was saying, he goes, if someone could give me, uh, thirty days and a cheap hotel and a phone, I could get off this street, and I can straighten my life around. I don't know what the answer is for these homeless, I, my heart goes out to them, uh, especially their Darnells, that maybe, maybe he will do something, he tried once and failed, but maybe the second time will work. But my big concerns are the ones with the mental issues. I mean, I now won't go in the front door when I'm trying to carry in a case of wine. I sneak in the back door now because I don't, I'm kind of fearful to go in the front door because there are some scary guys, as you can see, uh, what's been done. We got targeted, they put their feces in the front and the back of our place. Uh, they ripped trees right in front of our gallery. Uh, we've had them come up and smash rocks at our windows. And we just need help to make this, you know, maybe more ayes on the street would be helpful. I don't know what the answer is, so I'm just throwing this out to you. Oh, and also an invitation to, on the back, Emmanuel Devila Rosa, he's a tenor, world renowned. I hope you can make that. He's amazing, and, and I hope all of you have a very thank, Thanksgiving, very wonderful Thanksgiving, and thank you for your time.
I'll show your images with the police department too, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Conley, do you have a comment on this? No?
No, I, I don't know why I can't get, I, those are from new business.
Alderwoman Purchase, do you have a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say too that I am responsive when you all reach out to me.
Yes, yes, you have been very responsive.
I understand you coming to speak in front of my colleagues in the city tonight, but I just want to be clear that I'm responsive every time that something goes on, and it's not just your entity neither.
Yeah.
I, we, we have, right now, it's picking up a lot where they're still standing on the corner asking for money. Anybody that walks past, I'm downtown a lot every day right now, and I'm even getting approached by them. And they're saying, I know you got money, give me money. So they're getting really bold and aggressive. And Officer Newman, I want to ask him to come up to speak to this because I'm in constant contact with him and Chief Scarlett when any of you all send me a, a message, but I can't approach them, I have to let the police do their job. So I do want to allow Officer Newman, so people who are watching can hear this. I know we have the holiday walks coming up next week. I want people to come inside of your establishment on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Yeah. And you have been very responsive, and, uh, Jim Donlin, he's helped out too. And I've talked to Officer Newman and Blinkton, we have a person out tonight watching our place, and, um...
Yeah, and so if we can bring Officer Newman up, and then I don't know if Chief Scarlett could, if we can have an eye in the sky over in this area just because it's a really huge pow-up going on.
Nice to meet you.
Pleasure. Yeah, so I think, um, obviously I just met Mrs. Stark here, I think we'll have a conversation afterwards about what we can do to partner, Mike, you can come on up as well. Um, Mike's actually here off-duty on his own time because he needed some entertainment for Tuesday night, God love him.
We are reality TV tonight.
Good night to be here, so, uh, but, uh, I've talked about Mike and, and his work, and Shannon Allen and her work in our, with our homeless outreach team, and obviously, um, you know, we talked about there's only so much that we can do, but that's not an excuse. We, we certainly need to look at, uh, new, new methods and whatever we can, think outside the box to, to take care of our, uh, business owners and our residents as well. We can certainly put an eye in the sky, I have no problem doing that, and I'm going to let Mike talk a little bit, uh, if you'd like, is that good?
Thank you, thank you. Madam Mayor, all the persons, good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Strack, it's a pleasure meeting you.
Nice to meet you too.
Through the emails and everything, but it's a pleasure seeing, putting the face to the name. Uh, as far as Sixth Street, uh, like you stated, I think we started corresponding about a week ago. And so I've been out speaking to the individuals in that area. We have to be kind of careful with how we approach and how we deal with things. It's kind of my job to know both sides of the fence, if you will. Um, of course, yes, they do have rights, and we want to protect our citizens to the utmost. Um, however, we can't just move people along. As you stated one time, it was okay when they were on the other side of the street, but, but that's a problem for someone else. So we, we try not to just move people along, but to, as I said, eradicate the homeless issue as a whole. Uh, we have one of the best housing individuals who came up earlier, Nick here. He's, can speak to the complexity of getting some people housed, especially those with the mental illness. Um, also, when dealing with them, with, with their rights, before we take away the civil liberties of someone, we have to be very careful because there was a lot of conversation about money tonight, I picked up on that. And I happen to know in research that one of the individuals that lays on the sidewalk has already sued and run against Departments of Corrections, and he has an active attorney. So, when we do things, it, it requires sometimes a lot of research and preparation to place them somewhere. Um, as far as the damage to the property, of course, that is a very serious issue. No one wants to have their investment damaged or, or put at risk. And that's why I've asked that any, any type of incidents that occur, please contact police. If someone is in front of your doorway and you're trying to go into your establishment, please call us at that moment. That way we can dress the, address the issue in real time. And if there's no report, it's kind of makes it difficult for us to hold someone accountable and get, not only make you whole again, but to get them the help that they need. If it is due to a mental illness, someone breaks a window or something, we can go to the state's attorney and have them held accountable. But not only just to put them into the system, but we have Mental Health Court where this person can become medicated and through that can become housed. So, we are definitely aware of the issue and trying to, I think there are, if I'm not mistaken, four individuals that find themselves there every evening, and I know them very well. And as you said, Darnell is one, and he's a, not a bad person, but he's, he's quite, quite stubborn when it comes to this issue. But, um, we're going to continue to, to do everything we can, and, and again, any questions, any concerns, please continue to bring them my way, and I will address them. Uh, I've spoken with the previous, uh, legal counsel for the city. They were unfortunately unable to give me information that would assist in this matter. And I've recently, as, as of today, reached out to our current administration legal counsel to see if they could possibly, um, give me a little more insight. So, we are actively working, uh, working the area as well as the rest of the city and all the wards because everyone has someone that sits under a tree or that's laying against the fence.
Yeah.
And we are, we are really, uh, Dave has actually agreed to go into shelter after Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay, cause, so, so, so just to say, so Dave slept outside, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we're not, Alderwoman has the floor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
She's still signed in.
I'm sorry.
Madam, I just wanted to also, while we're talking about it, commend the police department. Last week, Enos Park is under severe with homeless going into abandoned homes, living there, and you all are doing a good job by arresting them because they're in there having a free-for-all right now.
Right.
It's so bad, I've reported some of these houses to the Housing Division, and I get told that there's no violations, the house is in perfect condition, but obviously people are living in there, and one house they was living in for two weeks. Then they just went in some, the house next door to me, cut a peephole in the board to watch me through the window. And they're turning lights on, this is getting very, very uncomfortable right now. But on the flip side, I do want to commend you because when I'm calling you all, you all are coming right there and going into those houses and being able to bring them out because they're trespassing too as well.
Right, right.
So this is going on all over, and I don't know where everyone is coming from. They're like a McDonald's, they're on every corner right now.
A, as a capital, we attract a lot of people. Some people come because they know the laws are made here, some, the word has gotten out that the good job that the city and the other organizations attached, that they're doing to get people housed. So we do receive people in groves, and then you have some people who, because we are the capital, sometimes their mental illness tells them that they need to come here to speak to the mayor or to the governor, things of that issue. If, there are a number of reasons why people end up here in Springfield. But as far as capitals go, we're not doing too bad with our homeless problem because it's, uh, there's a lot of other cities our size, smaller and larger, that it is a lot worse.
Well, Mike, I can.
We're paying them, right, like, I've paid them, the neighbors on Fifth Street has paid them just to clean up what they put out on the street and have on the sidewalks, and it's just getting ridiculous.
Well, Mike, I commend you as well, and I will say, this administration, and Chief Scarlett is a part of this administration, are committed to working, and Mike was a part of a great big, uh, event we had last week because we're going to work on additional help for the mentally challenged individuals that are finding themselves possibly homeless or not, folks who have problems with addiction of some sort or another. So there's a lot going on that the administration's working on, and Mike is knee-deep in that, which I'm very appreciative of. Um, I will say, unfortunately, Ms. Strack, we are short-staffed on our police department. By no fault of my own, but I am committed, and so is the chief, to getting that fully staffed. My goal is to have, there's only five neighborhood police officers for the whole community. My goal is to have ten plus one for downtown, so eleven total. Then you'd have your own neighborhood police officer walk on the streets of downtown every day. That's really what we need. So we will get there, and I apologize, we're trying to get there, but Mike is amazing to work with, he's great. The chief is really committed to getting this taken care of too, so I cannot commend the police department enough for their work. Amazing.
And to, to piggyback off of Mary's comment, all those individuals, we've entered them into a system, it's called TASK, the new program, and they have, for each person, about four social workers that they, they told us that are going to come out and aggressively try to get the resources to these individuals who need them, to, to get them into housing.
But we'll send more, uh, about it once it's in place, but there's stuff working, being the works. Alderman Williams, you had something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I want to commend you guys too, but you know, my ward had one of the largest fires, um, just the other day. You know, it was a pretty big fire, a lot of resources. And I was saying, uh, Alderman Rockford and, uh, Dave Fuchs there, the director, I said, you know, this is a lot of resources. I mean, tons of trucks and people to, to a house that's burning in the middle of the block of a whole bunch of empty houses. I mean, I just felt like, what a waste. Then they argued with me and said, well, no, Alderman, we, I just said, well, rope it off, let them all burn down. You know, s- since the fire was gone, and all them trucks was there, we could have done it safely, they would have been gone. God told them, no. Dave? I'm, no, no, seriously, that's how you do it. But Dave, uh, uh, Chief Scarlett, he, Dave slept outside, well, really, Sean, he slept outside through the deracial or whatever that storm was, and people blamed us. And said, and I, I do feel the police could have arrested him that night, you know, Dave.
No, sir. As a matter of fact, that night, I went out to Dave to try to get him in from the storm. Dave refused to move, I, I can't just grab someone and pull them off, he has, he has.
In a bad storm like that.
He has the right, if, if you wanted to go out and stand in your backyard and tornado watch, I couldn't come and arrest you.
I mean, I can't go lay down on the sidewalk, uh, right now either.
You absolutely can. It is, it is a public.
Well, we shouldn't say that, okay.
We're going to take your picture.
Okay. Forget it, yeah. Well, let's forget it, we should.
Don't bring any cats with you, Roy.
All right.
Goodness gracious.
I don't think Mike's going to, Mike doesn't want to lay with you. Is there anyone else who has comments for this? Thank you for your time, and we'll make sure.
You're welcome.
The police department gets this, thank you.
This is a crazy world.
Thanks, Mike.
The next person signed up to speak is Gina Lathan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I wanted, my name is Dr. Gina Lathan, and I am the co-owner and president of Route History. And we tell the story along Route sixty-six of the black experience, which is very unique. Oftentimes, it's not, it was not get your kicks on Route sixty-six, but it was a story of, of survival. It was a story of the Great Migration, many thousands of, hundreds of thousands of people leaving the South and traveling, uh, to the North for greater opportunities. And so what we do on the Illinois leg of Route sixty-six, there are eight states, is we really take time to tell the story, in particular to Illinois, about all the great advancements in terms of economic development, small business, um, and leadership along the, in the black community along Route sixty-six. It's a very unique story, a great story. Many other people, places, and events are no. It's a very unique story, a great story. Many of the people, places and events are no longer here, but in, especially in many of the places. And so what we did is we were able to secure funding with the city through DCEO and identify and develop a virtual reality. And so the virtual reality touches six cities within the state of Illinois. Chicago, Joliet, Bloomington, Springfield, Peoria, East St. Louis and Brooklyn, Brooklyn, Illinois. And so what we're, what we've been able to do is we've been able to go to all of those cities on numerous occasions. And we've been able to visit with traditional museums, but also we've been referred a lot to the local historians. Many of the local historians, black historians are 70, 80. We even, in Brooklyn, we sat down and had great conversations with a 90-year-old historian. And so we were able to hear about the richnesses. And we talked, I heard a lot of conversation around violence, violence prevention. But what I also know is that there's a great need for more understanding of representation. Many of those young children need to see their greatness and have a better understanding that they stand on the shoulders of those greatness. And so on December 18th, we will be having a soft launch of our virtual reality. And we open January the 15th. We will be, we want to come, we wanted to come here and invite all of you. We've been working closely with Scott Dahl and his team from the very beginning. We started to meet with the Presidential Museum. We wanted to get a better understanding of different ways that virtual reality has been used in Illinois. We've traveled through, to other states. We've gone to Atlanta. We've been in Missouri, Washington DC. And really been able to travel to other museums and find out about virtual reality and how it could be able to introduce technology to our kids in many ways, but also teach and tell stories that a lot of times were not captured, were not appreciated and were not shared. And so this is just a highlight of what we've done. I have a lot of notes, but I don't have my reading glasses, so I don't want to embarrass myself too much. But I do want to share a little bit more because I see I have two minutes. And so the vehicles by which we're traveling are, we are going to have the Negro League, which will be traveling. We will have a family of four. We will have a World Two veteran. And we will also have a blues singer in her band. And so you will be able to travel their journey. You'll be able to go to tourist homes. You will be able to have rich experiences. You may be in Chicago while Dr. King was there and he was talking about housing rights. You may be in East St. Louis where Miles Davis was born and raised. And also remember, 2026 is the 100th anniversary of Route 66. It's also the 100th birthday of Mr. Miles Davis, who was born in Alton, Illinois, but raised in East St. Louis, Illinois. And it's also the 100th anniversary of the Springfield Urban League here in Springfield. So we have, we are going to be having a lot to celebrate in our area. And keep in mind also that tourism around Route 66 is very lucrative. It is a $262 million industry. And when you layer it on top of cultural tourism is what we provide in terms of celebration of a culture, you have about a $100 million industry as well. And so we want to tap into that and bring about more revenue to our city. But we also want to make sure that we celebrate and appreciate the highlights of Springfield as well. So we have a lot, we've been able to do so many interviews. We've done over 8,000 viewings of virtual, of video footage from history makers and other outlets that tell black stories in the state of Illinois. And so this has been a tremendous experience that we are going to sit down and chronicle. But we're also going to be able to capture and tell those stories. We have 20, no, we have 32 scenes in all the cities because every family or in a group, they travel to every city. So there's a scene in every city. And we also, we have the harsh reality of sundown towns, those towns where black people had to be out before the sun went down. And so we also have eight of those experiences. They're much shorter because we really didn't want to focus on that, but that is a part of our history. So we wanted to tell it. And so it's about a 20-minute experience and we hope that all of you can come and join us. And if you can't, we officially open January 15th, so we hope to see you soon. Thank you. Ooh, I'm 11 seconds over. Goodbye.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Jonathan Clark. Are you here? No? So the last person signed up to speak is Donald Hanrahan.
Don Hanrahan, office address 1119 South Sixth and Ward Six. And my home address is 4981 Smith Road, Pleasant Plains. A couple of weeks ago, I sent you a copy of a letter from the US EPA that was submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers recommending that the Army Corps deny a permit for Hunter Dam. Just yesterday, I learned that in fact, US EPA sent two letters, both the same day. The second one is 14 pages. It's more detailed and it raises additional issues. The contractor that CWLP hired to do the study emailed CWLP on October 3rd letting them know that all the public comments were available. And I wonder, has this second one been shared publicly? The two lengthy comments that the US EPA made about Hunter Lake strike at the very heart of the project. The agency that ultimately determines compliance with the Clean Water Act is saying, we don't think this project complies. And that's what we've been telling city councils for 35 years for free. As opponents did, the agency criticizes CWLP for its subterfuge of using a dummyed-up need for water-based recreation to make it appear there are no alternatives to Hunter Lake. As opponents have said, they agree there's no demonstrated need for more water. And even if there is, there are better, less costly alternatives. As opponents did, EPA notes that the dam will result in a phosphorus impaired body of water that can't meet the Clean Water Act. They criticize the failure to properly consider environmental justice, noting that the project will likely have disproportionate adverse impacts on minority and low-income residents and more. Where do things stand? If the Army Corps decides that they're going to buck the US EPA and issues a permit, they still have to get a permit from Illinois EPA, a clean water permit, from the sister agency of the agency that just said it can't meet the Clean Water Act. CWLP says in its supplemental environmental impact study that they will try to get a variance from the Illinois Pollution Control Board because they can't show that building this dam is going to result in a lake that's not polluted. They admit that even implementing expensive best practices for Hunter Lake will reduce phosphorus by only 50%, still double the amount that's allowed by law. So their plan is to try to get a permanent variance from the Pollution Control Board. So there's a lot of big ifs here. If the Army Corps bucks the EPA, we still have a chance to get a permit. If EPA bucks the agency that funds them, then maybe we still have a chance. If the Illinois Pollution Control Board agrees to issue a permanent variance, well, a lot of ifs, probably more studies, more costs, more new lipstick applied to an old pig that's still a pig after 35 years. Communities across the country are removing dams and embracing clean energy. Here we are, still pushing for an unneeded dam misconceived 60 years ago. Now we're five years behind the eight ball on renewable power generation and pushing instead to convert dolmanphor from one fossil fuel to another. Why still pursue this instead of funding replacement of 120-year-old combined sewers? Why fund this instead of dredging Lake Springfield? Or for smart meter installation for our own renewable energy generation for dozens of miles of 70-plus-year-old water mains that are leaking 20% of our treated water? For lead pipe removal, for things that improve lives, health, safety and give more jobs to union workers for decades? Given the significance of US EPA recommendations, it really makes sense to begin planning and consideration of what happens if the permits are denied. I urge the council to begin planning an inclusive people's commission to start to address what can be done with 8,000 acres of land owned by we, the people, that we're not allowed to see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the chambers that wishes to address the council? Can I entertain him?
Well, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alderman Williams.
I mean, I ain't going to get in my way, but you know how much money we could have saved? And I mean, you had all your staff out there and your trucks and all this. And I'm still kind of upset that the fire could have just took all them houses that we've been having complaints about.
Would you like Chief Canny to address why we couldn't let the fire keep coming?
No, they already told me no, thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to pretend to be a firefighter, sir.
I mean, I know, but you're the boss.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Gregory.